I've got something for you, just humbled because we know how to be, Lord. We thank you for the opportunity to live in this great nation. Enjoy all the amenities that have offered that you have provided to us through through this country, Lord. Well, we pray for our leaders. At the federal level and state level and pray today here that you will bless, whatever we do, that what the outcome of this meeting, Lord, will be to your will. We pray for your guidance and your wisdom. We pray for the help of everybody here and as they return to their respective positions and when they go about their ways, Lord, deliver them safely. We especially thank you, Lord, today of your son, Jesus, all the suffering he did in our behalf so that we can deliver with you through eternity. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you.
Got a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, approval of the minutes from the September 10th regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Approval of accounts payable and payroll.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we are at, um...
Public request, number four.
Public request. We have any public requests? Anybody have anything they want to say? You've got three minutes. And you could just state your name for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Good morning. How are y'all?
Good, how are you?
Good. So, I have no clue, I've only seen what's been posted on Facebook and whatnot. Obviously, he's here on phone, but he's not here in person, that there was some sort of drunken brawl at a football game recently with Commissioner Lopez. If it's true, my question is, why are you guys not demanding his resignation? I know his term ends soon, but, you know, if this is the case, and I would expect you guys probably know more about it than I do or anyone else does. I mean, that's...
Can I say something real quick?
Sure.
We don't generally speak in these public comments, but I would like you to know Commissioner Lopez was not even there. There is no documentation, no record. Commissioner Lopez was out of town. He himself was not there.
Okay, so, and that's kind of my point to this is, you see all the stuff on Facebook and everyone's asking questions. This is where we need you guys to stand up and put something out and say, hey, this is what we know what happened, this is what we know are the facts, and quash these rumors. That way, people aren't going, hey, you know, what's the deal with this guy? Why is he still on the board? Why is he, why are you guys looking like you're not doing your jobs by demanding his resignation? You know? Put something out there and say, hey, this is what's going on. We want to quash these rumors, we want to know what's happened, and this is what we know. So, that's what I've got.
Minister, can I say something?
No.
Nope, not right now. Anyone else?
Good morning, everyone, I'm Lacey Potts. I'm sure you guys have heard of me at this point. I would like to make a statement adding to that. I know that he wasn't at the football game when that brawl took place. From my understanding, though, it started at our county fair or at our city fair, and that's where the altercation started. So, although he wasn't at the football game, it was his family members. It did start at the fair, and it is alarming that we can't go to our local fairs and our local football games without our representatives attacking people or getting drunk in public and starting altercations with individuals that might not agree with them. And I do feel that action needs to be taken if we're going to be accountable and if we're going to gain the trust and confidence from the citizens of this community. So, that's just my comment for today.
Thank you. Anyone else? Y'all sure? Okay. Thank you very much. We will move on to elected officials and department heads. First up is Mandy Park.
Good morning, commissioners. I have a very short report. We finished test voting our tabulators last Thursday. We will do mock election this afternoon, make sure that reporting process runs smoothly. And then, we will start early voting on October 8th, which is a week from today. And then, election day is the 10th, uh, the 5th, and we'll canvass on the 12th.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, court compliance. Ms. Minas.
She wasn't able to come. She just mainly wanted to share her report of her field safety plan that I had sent y'all. Kind of what she was doing and her policy at this point as to kind of what she's wanting to do. So, we may put that into something. I'd like to get your words, if y'all read that a little bit, let us know kind of how she's, what she's doing and how she's doing her scheduled home visits and whatnot.
This is in our packet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to detention, Ms. Ramsey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me get situated here. Okay, this morning, our facility count is at 58. We have 15 females and 43 males. We have eight out of county. We billed for Quay, we billed him this morning, $15,125. Cannon was $625. Our MAT program has 11, 11 in group counseling. Individual counseling is also 11. We have six to interview for that program. We have eight on medication. We have six in our GED program. We have 11 in yoga. Parenting is going to resume this month. Anger management, we're going to start doing that again next month. We started our education programs with the MAT detainees. All 11 are in that. We also did a class for obtaining housing. All 11 took that class. Our new classroom is complete, so we'll have a little bit more room for programs. We had, I wanted to add, our arrests since January 1st, 691. We had 429 arrested by PPD, 144 by SO. We had two arrested by state police, and then we had 116 by other agency, and that includes EMU. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have questions to say? Okay, Sheriff Sanchez.
Well, I still have to do my restricted housing.
Oh, sorry. I was getting rid of you.
You're good. So, for our quarterly report for restricted housing, we are still at zero. And that's from July, or July to September.
Thank you.
No problem. Have a good day.
You too.
Um, Shala?
Yes, sir.
Were you going to be here when these other agreements come up?
Well, I have some other things that I have to be at. I was going to have Annette do the housing agreements for me. Did you have any questions about those, or?
No, I just saw a deal from Santa Fe, they're upping their rate to 220. Our agreement with Lee's 150. I just wondered, are we going to go up on any of ours, seeing?
We are not, not this year. And reason being is because it's so minimal, there's no point in going up just yet. But I will be doing that probably by the end of the year to show the difference for next year. So, I'll probably have that out, I want to say around January.
Okay.
Every county is at their own discretion to charge what they deem appropriate, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No problem, have a good day.
Okay, Sheriff Sanchez.
He's going to be late.
Okay.
So, he may come back to report what he needs to hear.
Okay. Special project, Ms. Weems.
Good morning. It's been a few months since I came before you and gave you a grant update, so I just wanted to do that today. And we're currently working on LGRF 24, school best caps and co-op. And that grant is to be completed by December this year. Our Recreation Quality of Life grant was extended. It was supposed to conclude this year. And we did get an extension and brought to you guys previously through December of '26. The total has been encumbered and we're waiting on completion of the project. And then, we will submit for final reimbursement. USDA congressional spending money for a fire truck for Arch. And the equipment was ordered, received, and reimbursement has been requested, and we're still waiting on that. It was just requested a couple of weeks ago. And the truck is on order and should be here in the first part of 2025. And we were awarded 490 capital appropriations for the road department for distributor truck. And we have received an NOO from NMDOT, and the distributor has been ordered utilizing a statewide, not a statewide prize agreement, a cooperative agreement with Sourcewell. Capital outlay for 25, the $500,000 for the chip spreader. NOO was submitted and approved, and the chip spreader has been ordered using a cooperative agreement with Sourcewell for that. And capital outlay is in progress for 490 for road rehabilitation to be completed by June of next year. And the 400,000 road maintenance to be completed by June of 2027. And we did apply for and received LGRF 25 for co-op caps and school bests. We also have approved and we're still waiting on the fully executed agreement to come back from DFA for the Corrections, Retention, and Recruitment grant that was brought before you guys, not very long ago. And we did apply for some congressional direct spending from Heinrich's Office, Teresa Fernandez-Ledger, and Martin, no, Ben Luhon. And most of those, we did not get chosen to move forward. Some of our projects made it through the first round, but not the second. The only one that we still have possibly out there is one with Luhon, and that is for the second main at Arch. And then, we have applied for an EMPG grant with a 50-50 match for emergency management and FY '25 fire protection grant for a pumper for Arch. But we have not received any notification on either one of those.
Any questions?
I have none. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, road department, Mr. Dominguez.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, our project crew will be finishing up on South Roosevelt Road F, south of Arch, today. Then, they will be coming in for service before they head out to 34 and Z. Our blades are out on the routes. Got one west of Mill Road, got one on 5 and 330, one on S and 10, one on 18 and S, one on 41, west of Mill and San, one on 28 and AC, and one on 26 and 206. And our shredder has made another complete round already. Then, we got aggregate coming in for Van subdivision and South Roosevelt Road 4 and 1/2 to try and get in Chipseal before the weather gets us, so.
Thank you.
That's about it.
I have no question.
You're doing good, Juan, thank you. Treasurer, Ms. Sanchez.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning.
And I just want to report for you this morning, your ending balance in your general fund for July. Your beginning cash was $4,744,530.45, and you had debits of $488,314.10, and then you had credits of $914,041.16, leaving your ending, excuse me, ending cash in general fund at $4,318,803.39. If all the funds were in your packet, and I will stand for any questions that you might have.
I have none.
Very well, thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Moving on to manager, Ms. Kirk.
Good morning. So, we hired a new HR person, Gemma Martin. She's here with us today. We are working on hiring for finance. And then, all of our positions that have been in my office will be filled. Treasurer has asked for a part-time person. I've suggested that we do some cross-training within the different departments to kind of help each other out. And Ramsey has even volunteered one of hers to help as well. I've visited with RGH. We're working on an agreement. Some of their rates have increased, and so, we are going through negotiations before we get a contract in place and have it looked at. They've also asked if we would consider using them again for detention as they are now fully staffed. Bonham House, we've met with White Sands Construction, and we're getting ready to move forward on that project. I did attend the Eastern New Mexico Water Authority ground breaking last week, and that discussed how the pipeline would affect our area. I do also want to sit here and say how much I appreciate Lael and Carla for stepping up and being such a huge blessing to us and helping us out in so many different ways. They've come up and taken on several items that they didn't have to and just weren't even, you know, they just honestly come up and said, we need this. Mandy as well. And also, Tony Powell has been helping us out in the business side of it, and I appreciate all her help. Another thing that we did last week, Commissioners Dixon, Chriswell, Juan, and myself toured some of the areas that were discussed on the SLO conversations that we were having. And at this time, I'd like for us, I'd like for y'all to consider the fact that we kind of put a pause on those discussions until I've had an opportunity to go through some of the old notes from 12 years ago and from the last three years, so I can be a lot more up to date on those before any decisions can be made. And then, of course, right now, the auditors are in our office. They're doing their field work, and they told us they should have everything wrapped up pretty quickly. And that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Annette?
No.
Okay. Moving on to commissioners. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, now I can hear you loud and clear now.
Okay, do you have something you'd like to say?
Uh, yes, of course. First of all, I want to...
Where'd you go? I lost him. He's having a fit. I'll look at the phone number. We'll skip to one more. Do you have something you'd like to say before, and I'll take it back on the phone?
No, go ahead.
You were supposed to take up some time. Come on, Paul, work with me here. Yeah, Paul, come on. Jeez Louise.
All the eyes are on you.
How about you, Mr. Savage?
I have nothing to say.
They're not helping you.
Paul, do you want to talk about those resolutions for next meeting? Those resolutions for the next meeting at the Armed Services?
Oh, you want me to talk on that?
Yeah.
Oh, sure. I've got a lot to say. Uh, one of these resolutions is concerning increasing medical care in New Mexico through participation in the multi-state compact. I can read it, it's kind of short, will take a little more time. It says, whereas New Mexico has needed additional licensed medical professionals, and whereas interstate medical licensee licensure compact has 42 participating states, and whereas IMLC provides the pathway for licensure for physicians in each participating state, and whereas the media addition of healthcare professionals would highly benefit New Mexico, and whereas the IMLC provides a fair and responsible fee structure for all states, and whereas New Mexico Medical Society supports joining IMLC, and whereas states have joined, the IMLC have seen increased access to doctors, which New Mexico is short of doctors. And so, I sort of agree with that anyways. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Clovis should seek the, uh, using, and we should be saying that Roosevelt County, but this is a resolution the City of Clovis passed, should seek the introduction of legislation that prioritizes Mexico participation interstate medical licensure compact. And that's it. This is just really just to make it where our doctors can cross state lines and I guess the liability in their profession is pretty severe right now, so. And it's getting worse. This helps them out, so that's it. And the other one is, uh, I'm not going to read it. Anyway, it's concerning the psychological behavioral health care in New Mexico through participation multi-state compact. Same thing, only it's for the, uh, psychological health care, but we have sort of already passed a resolution similar to this, but I will introduce it at the next meeting. Yeah, have you got contact yet?
I do have contact.
All right, I'm glad I'm through.
Thank you, Commissioner Savage. Great job.
Savage.
I mean, writer.
Oh, boy.
I don't even know who I'm talking to.
You know, I've been called worse.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes, I'm here, and I can hear you guys loud and clear.
Okay, you're up.
Uh, in reference to the individuals who did the public comments, I'd like to just do my little rebuttal for point of clarification. I want to make them be on record. I was representing the county at the New Mexico State Fair during the altercation of whatever happened at the football game. I had nothing to do with it, and I was not present, and I didn't even find out about it way after the fact. I just want that to be clarified. The situation that happened at the fair, it's funny because deflection is something that a lot of people are using now. I thought if anybody would speak in reference to what occurred there, that they'd be apologizing. You know, we are held to a higher standard. I'm a very, very educated person, and I've been in politics for many, many years. And, you know, we are held to a higher standard, but because of our elected positions, you know, we know that we have a sort of ethic. We know everything we have, like, back of our hand. But it just saddens me that I could be harassed, victimized, threatened directly by two individuals, called, being called a baby killer, blaming me for whatever the Roosevelt County Democratic booth had at the fair. I've never even saw it, never went by it, and I, actually, I've never been involved with the Democratic Republican Party that currently exists in Roosevelt County. So, I want to clarify that. What saddens me even more is that, you know, one of the individuals says, Trump, please, get ready, we're coming locked and loaded for you. And, you know, I contemplated whether I should take another step, and it's a lot of undue stress, but I'm going to tell you one thing right now. I did not go through PPD, I did not go through the sheriff's office. I don't want there to be any type of conflict, but I wanted it to be held on record how I was directly, directly threatened with my life. And that's why the state police has it on record because, like I said, I was called a baby killer. We're haters more than this. I could go on and on and on, and for them to say and have to go that I was aggressive in any way, but those men that are so big, first of all. Second of all, my granddaughter had already bought me a $25 plate of tacos, and we were going to go sit down in the tailgate to eat because there was no room at the eating quarters. And needless to say, I had to go home, I threw my feet away. It ruined my whole night representing our county, lighting my district fairgrounds. We were having a blast, my wife was at a board meeting in Albuquerque, so she can attend. And, you know, I just want to clarify that because I'm disheartened, it was hurtful, it was mean, and deflection is key. It's sad that they turned everything around, and I had nothing to do with that event at the football game, and it had nothing to do with what occurred at the fairgrounds because I never let anybody know. Because I don't like to promote undue stress on others, especially my loved ones. It had everything to do with what was posted about my dad, which was a bunch of falsehoods, and it's embarrassing that people actually take to social media and right away jump to conclusions. My phone number is 575-799-3548. My address is 1,000 East First, Patouse, Mexico, 88130. If you guys have a concern, I have a home office here, and we will sit down, have a cup of soda, a cup of coffee, whatever, and I could clarify things because I'm into accountability. And I will be accountable for anything negative that I do. And I, my parents, well, be accountable for everything that you do, good, bad, or indifferent. So, with that, I want to let that lie, the whole thing, and I do appreciate you guys being there, and maybe you can post everything that I said because that was the truth. Okay, going on. Damn, I didn't fix this, but anyway. And I had talked to you about the BNFF line item. I didn't see it on the address, so I'm going to go ahead and talk about it now. Most of you are probably aware that there was a train accident with the car with individuals, young individuals and adults, I guess, going to school, the crossing off of Boston Street. And I assigned the BNFF person who represents the county with BNFF issues. I addressed this back when Ron Jackson was mayor, God rest his soul. But we knew that we were going to need, and I advocated so much for it, that we were going to need some crossing gates for flashers. Okay? I said back then, I think there was a front page story on it, when BNFF got that line back from the ones that had subbed it out, they improved their speed I keep to 49. I said, there's no way a train should be going 49 miles an hour through the heart of our town without crossing gates. I won't mention who dropped the ball. The county did everything from their end, BNFF did everything from their end. But I want to provide some information real quick, okay? This is, and I want this to be on record, obviously, this is truly addressed, I'm going to be out of office. But it's the BNFF contact for Public Road Crossing that oversees the Carlsbad subdivision, over to Carlsbad on the Southwest Division. It's the Public Projects Manager, he's out of Colorado and Arizona. And please, Mandy, this needs to be on record, okay? His correct number, and he's one of the top, top guys under Warren Buffett. I mean, yeah. So, his work number is 303-480-6586. His mobile is 817-471-6614. His personal number is 303-446-3540. four six, three five four zero. And, um, this is for public road crossings that oversees the Carlsbad subdivision and hold on, let me see. Section one thirty of the U.S. Code is a federal program that provides funding for the elimination of hazards at public railway highway crossings. So Annette and fellow commissioners, number one, fellow commissioners, I would love for you guys to give me the support to go ahead and continue advocating on this behalf. This particular, uh, rail crossing provides a lot of easy access into towns from most of the north, uh, Roosevelt County residents, county air force base, individuals going to eastern and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, we really, really need, um, for, uh, the city to get more involved. So Annette, if we can contact the city manager or ICAN and a couple of council people, all of them, we really need them, uh, to try to address this because it does lie within the city jurisdiction. And I'm going to repeat, it's section one thirty of the United States Code, federal program that provides funding for the elimination of hazards at public railway highway crossings. And I know we've advocated for somewhere I have out in the county, but I think that this is really important. I knew there was going to be an accident. It is on record from years ago. It's a dangerous, dangerous crossing. So I would respectfully request for the commission to give me the authority to advocate on the county behalf of the city so that we can jointly address what B N S F they can get some crossing, um, taken care of. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, Dennis.
You're very welcome. I missed you guys.
Commissioner Savage, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. I don't have, well, I, I want to say that I did go with, um, Annette and with Juan and Commissioner Chriswell when we went and looked at roads. I want to give you a thumbs up, Juan. You know this county like the back of your hand. I mean, he could tell me every inch of everything, who had it, what it was, every bit of it. So I want to tell you, great job. I really appreciated everything you did. Okay. Moving on to item six, consent agenda. This item is on the agenda so that the commission, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items. Um, so at our last meeting, um, I don't know that it was posted in the, um, appropriate amount of time. So with that being said, we need to ratify basically all of the action items that we took at our last meeting. They were all unanimous yes votes on every action item that we had, but we need to go ahead and just approve and we can approve them as a consent agenda, just all of them at one time. Um, we did everything from consideration of, um, order to Roosevelt County Assessor to impose the property tax rate set by the Department of Finance and Administration for year 2024. Um, the, we had discussion and consideration of appropriation, appropriation in the amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for correction recruitment funds, um, approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, participation in F Y twenty-four corrections recruitment fund, um, request for, uh, the resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three to replace resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight, Roosevelt County Certified Appraiser Compensation Incentive Program, um, the contract between Roosevelt County and San Juan County for housing juvenile detainees, um, the Curry Roosevelt County, County Contract for Detainees, Roosevelt County Curry Contract for Detainees, which was just the opposite. And, um, so with that, I would like, I would consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
For clarification, we're doing this because, uh, the, the public publishing of the agenda didn't meet the safety to our requirement.
To the website.
To the website. It was posted. It just, we have several places we do it and one of them is the website and it didn't make it to the website, which we did not get in trouble, but we just wanted to do that just to cover all the bases.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to seven, old business, discussion and consideration of intergovernmental agreement between Roosevelt County and the Administrative Office of the Courts in the Ninth Judicial District Court for improvements to the Roosevelt County Courthouse. Honorable Donna Mauer and Kevin Spears.
Hello. First, let me let Kevin talk about the intergovernmental agreement and then I want to talk about a couple of other things with you. Kevin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, as you're aware, we've been before this body a few times on this I G A, uh, soliciting money from the Administrative Office of the Courts on a match grant. Uh, we are at the point now where we have been through the entire process. The I G A has been prepared. It is ready. The funding is available. The project is good to start. We would just need the I G A signed, um, by the, the judge and the chairman of the, uh, chairperson of the commission and the A O C. So we present that I G A to this body this morning for signature and can certainly stand for any questions if there's additional questions about the agreement. Uh, it has not changed since we presented it last time. So I certainly am available to answer any questions if there are any this morning.
No questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Well, good. I just wanted to let you know also, Kevin and I were at a meeting last Friday. There is still about one point two million dollars available in matching funds for courthouse projects that would benefit the court. I wanted to bring that to your attention. There are smaller projects and when you have, for example, Sandoval County that's asking for millions of dollars for a new courthouse, um, our smaller projects are going to come in ahead of them because the pool of money is limited. And I wanted to bring that to your attention because we can think about things like, for example, a web-based fire alarm system for the courthouse that would benefit not only the court, but you all as county employees. I know that several years ago, um, the county got funding for new doors for this building. We can look at some sort of electronic door locks because that would benefit everybody, make it a more secure building, stair repairs, handrail refreshes, all of those things that benefit us on the second floor are projects that you can consider and I would encourage you to consider those. If they're less than a million dollars in a project, it's a streamlined process. We would have to complete, um, a letter like we did previously, get a, a letter from Ms. Kirk that indicates that she's willing to participate in that and then, um, get some estimates and then get the commission to endorse it and then it would go before our budget committee and then the Supreme Court. And if it's approved, it'll be the same process as this last situation. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because that is some funding that we can use to benefit the entire courthouse. And if you have.
Yes.
I, I have a question real quick. I will support that wholeheartedly, but I apologize, Judge Moore and Kevin, Mr. Kevin Spears, that I'm not there. I would look to Fino. But, uh, what's the timeline on this in reference to needing our letter of support or whatever?
Well, the funding is available and I don't, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner Lopez. The, it is really essentially a first come, first served basis at this point. The money's been available for a while. They're down to the last one point three million and just in a meeting on Friday, they, uh, were soliciting additional projects, so.
So from y'all, can you expedite this so that we can get in our portion of what you need as far as our support? And I'm not speaking for all the commissioners, just, uh, let the record respect that as well. I'm speaking for myself, but if you got connected, but I did, any money is good money if we can get it in here for our county.
Madam Chairman, Commissioner Lopez, I think that if the county were wanting to move forward on a pro, match project like this, it would, I could expedite it as fast as reasonably possible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioner.
Anybody else? Okay, got a motion? Got a motion in a second to approve seven A. Commissioner Grider? Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One quick question, if that's okay. I know we're on the agenda also at ten D. I'm wondering if, um, the vote today for seven A would, um, eliminate the need for us to be on the agenda at ten D?
It's the agreement. We have to have it in that spot for the agreement.
Okay.
It was just so y'all could have your discussion.
Okay. So we, but we don't need to present anything further. Okay.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
County manager.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I did want to, um, brag just a moment. Um, we created, we were part of a pilot project. So our courtroom is now a high-tech courtroom in Roosevelt County. We have lots of computer equipment for electronic presentation of evidence during trials. I would encourage all of you to come upstairs. Um, we'll give you a tour of how it works. Um, the big courthouses in Santa Fe and Albuquerque don't have this because we were part of a pilot project to show that it can be done in rural communities. So I would encourage all of you to come up and we'll give you a tour of the high-tech courtroom. We have the big displays like you have here so that even the audience members can see what's going on during a trial and during a hearing.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to eight A, new business healthcare assistance. Ms. Williams.
Good morning again.
Need to move go into indigent?
All second. We got a motion in a second to go into indigent. Dennis?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Yes. In your packet is, um, dispatch. Um, we received ten claims for a total of thirteen thousand, eight hundred, nine dollars and fifty-one cents. We approved a total of two for three hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-two cents. We disapproved eight for thirteen thousand, four ninety-four oh nine. From Fedco Emergency Physicians, we approved one at eighty-six dollars and forty-six cents. We disapproved three for three thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine dollars as those three claims, the patients had Medicaid at the date of service. From Roosevelt General Hospital, we approved one for two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents. We disapproved three at nine thousand, seven hundred, thirty-three dollars and nine cents. Those three patients also had Medicaid at the date of service. Concord Radiology, we approved zero. We disapproved two for sixty-two dollars. Those patients also had Medicaid at the date of service.
Any questions? I'll move. We come out of indigent. Got a motion in a second? Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we are out of indigent. I'll entertain a motion to approve indigent.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in a second?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Indigent's a hassle. Okay, discussion and contract, um, consideration of transportation road use and road manage, maintenance agreement between Nextera Energy Transmission Southwest LLC and B O C C Logan Waite, Senior Project Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Logan Waite, W A I T E for the record. Um, I am a third-party consultant to Nextera Energy Transmission. And we're before you today. In your packet is the road use agreement, um, that is proposed, uh, for the, a haul route and potential road improvements for a three hundred and forty-five kilovolt transmission line that is, uh, slotted for construction early next year. Um, I have worked with, um, county staff, county manager, Annette Kirk, uh, Juan Dominguez, and also Johnny Montell, uh, to get this road use agreement, um, to a spot that all parties are happy with. Um, and I'm here to answer any questions on the project or the agreement itself that you may have.
No questions.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion. Do you have any questions, Dennis?
I'm fine, Commissioner.
Okay.
I'm going to, uh, abbreviate the transportation road use agreement between Nextera Energy and Transmission Southwest.
I got a motion in a second to approve. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Grider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We might want to redo the list of members at the bottom of the page.
We did. I'm sorry.
Okay, no problem. Sorry.
I did catch it, but not till after I sent it out to you.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. Consideration of proclamation declaring November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four as walk to end Alzheimer's Day in Roosevelt County. Y'all are going to have to bear with me on this one. I will read this to you. Proclamation declaring November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four as walk to end Alzheimer's Day in Roosevelt County. Whereas approximately forty-three thousand New Mexicans currently live with Alzheimer's disease and that number is expected to increase to fifty-three thousand by the year twenty twenty-five. And whereas over eighty-five thousand family and friends in New Mexico provide two point five billion dollars in uncompensated care for their loved ones who have Alzheimer's disease and are subject to high levels of physical and emotional stress. And whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and whereas dementia is one of the costliest conditions to society. The cost of health care and long-term care for individuals with Alzheimer's or other dementia is substantial. And whereas the Alzheimer's Association leads the way to end Alzheimer's and all other dementia by accelerating global research, driving risk reduction and early detection and maximizing quality care and support. And whereas thousands of New Mexicans will come together during the fall of twenty twenty-four to raise awareness and funds through statewide Walk Stand Alzheimer's events. And whereas Roosevelt County, or Curry County in partnership with Roosevelt County and the city of Patalas is organizing an annual Eastern New Mexico Alzheimer's Walk on November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four from ten A M. to two P M. at the North Plains Mall. Now, therefore, I Tina Dixon, Chairman of the Board of Roosevelt County Commission, do hereby proclaim November sixteenth, twenty twenty-four as Walk End Alzheimer's Day in Roosevelt County, New Mexico, and encourage all citizens to attend the annual Eastern New Mexico Alzheimer's Walk and wear purple this day to raise awareness to Alzheimer's disease. Done this first day of October, twenty twenty-four. So with.
We approve nine A.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve nine A. Dennis?
Uh, can I say something real quick?
Yes. Yes.
I just want to commend you for this initiative that you've had for many, many years. This is something that's truly, truly close to your heart and I will support this initiative forever. So thank you, Madam Chair. And with that, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Item nine B, request for the approval of the resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three to replace resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight Roosevelt County I A A O Certified Property Appraisal Compensation Initiative Program.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Um, I request that resolution number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three replace resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-eight. The reason is that there was an error discovered by our county clerk and this resolution is only changing the language to match state statute. There are no changes in incentive pay amounts and I stand for any questions.
I'm going to approve.
Got a motion in a second to approve nine B? Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine C, request for the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four and notice of intent relating to the proposed industrial revenue bonds entitled Roosevelt County, New Mexico Taxable Industrial Revenue Bonds, Blackwater Solar Center, Peter Kelton, and Rodney Law.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Peter Kelton. I am an attorney with the Rhodey Law Firm. Uh, we represent Roosevelt County in connection with these proposed industrial revenues. We represent Roosevelt County in connection with these proposed industrial revenue bonds. Also here today are Thane Hutchinson and Beatrice Sampson from the developer team, in case there are any questions regarding the project itself. So I've put together a brief presentation regarding, oh. Which, no, no, it's okay. I can do a quick walkthrough of IRBs, but I understand that there may be some questions regarding how IRBs work, and thought that it might be helpful to provide that presentation before presenting the inducement resolution if the commission would be interested in learning more.
Please proceed as far as I'm concerned.
Pardon?
Really listen to what he has to say.
Okay.
So industrial revenue bonds are an economic development incentive that is available to counties and municipalities across the state of New Mexico. Essentially, what they provide are grocery receipts compensating and property tax exemptions to developers for certain projects. Throughout the state of New Mexico, tens of billions of dollars have been issued for, sorry, tens of billions of dollars to support, or apologies. Tens of billions of dollars of industrial revenue bonds have been issued to support renewable energy projects. Counties including Luna County, San Juan County, Harding County, Quay County have all issued IRBs to help in supporting solar and wind projects throughout the state. Our firm represents both counties and units, or counties and developers for IRB projects. And some of our clients include Harding County, Quay County, Luna County, Grant County, and San Juan County. So just to clarify upfront, the IRBs that are issued are not an obligation of the county. These are not a county debt. The county would not be providing any direct funds to the developer in connection with the IRB. Rather, it helps us, it helps to serve as a mechanism for getting those grocery receipts compensating and property tax exemptions through the IRB structure. So in exchange for those tax incentives, developers would enter into certain agreements to provide payments in lieu of taxes to the county in exchange for those tax incentives. Developers would also commit to various terms that the county would impose in connection with the IRB transaction. Those are all subject to negotiation between the developer team and county management and the Board of County Commissioners itself. In terms of how the structure works, the developer would convey all of its interest in the equipment and real property for the project to the county, which the county would then lease back to the developer so that the developer maintains full economic control over the project. However, title to the property would be vested in the county, thereby providing property tax exemptions. There would also be an agency relationship established between the county and the developer, and that would provide grocery receipts and compensating tax exemptions that the county would ordinarily receive for acquisition of tangible personal property. So in other words, equipment. So again, the bonds are not an obligation of the county. It is not a debt that the county would owe. Instead, the bonds are a better reflection of how much the developer anticipates spending in the county on the project. And that serves as the upper limit of the amount of equipment that the developer can purchase exempt from grocery receipts and compensating taxes. The other, so in connection with an IRB, there will be three main documents. There will be a lease agreement, a bond purchase agreement, and an indenture. And that serves as the main core set of documents that the county would be agreeing to in connection with the IRB transaction. So in terms of the important feature of what, or really the most important feature of what the developer would be providing for an IRB transaction would be the payments in lieu of taxes. So in, as we push forward with consideration of the IRB transaction generally, the developer and the county team will negotiate how much and at what times the developer will pay amounts to the county in exchange for the abatement of property taxes, grocery receipts, and compensating taxes. There would be an arrangement as well where a portion of what the county receives would also go to the school districts in the county. And the amounts that would go to the school districts is determined by statute. The benefit, one of the great benefits of these payments in lieu of taxes is that they're not subject to the same restrictions that might otherwise occur for property taxes. So your property tax revenues that you receive are more limited in terms of what you're able to spend that money on. But because pilots are a contractual benefit and a contractual payment that you receive, you have greater flexibility to pay things like salaries out of those pilots. In terms of timing, what's before you today is an inducement resolution. That inducement resolution will establish the agency relationship between the county and the developer that will allow the developer to start making purchases of longer lead time equipment exempt from grocery receipts and compensating taxes. The inducement resolution will also provide authorization to the county to post and mail notices necessary for providing the public with notice that the bond ordinance will be considered at a later meeting. After the notices have been posted, there's about a 30-day, or well, after the notices have been mailed, there's about a 30-day waiting period before the ordinance can be considered. After the ordinance, if it is adopted, there's a 30-day waiting period after it is recorded. That would have to be, that would have to expire before the, the IRB transaction can close. So the project itself is a solar generation and battery facility as the developer team has presented at the previous meeting. It consists of about just over 2,000 acres of real property. It'll be, development will be undertaken by the Altus and Orsted Groups through an entity named Blackwater Solar Center LLC. And they've requested a $315 million IRB with a term of 30 years. So I will open for any questions that you have regarding the IRB structure because I know that I just gave you quite a lot of information.
Do you have any questions, Dennis?
I'm fine, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So the, since we're through that little presentation, before you today is a resolution. It is known as an inducement resolution. It serves the purpose, again, of creating the agency relationship between the developer and the county. That'll allow the developer to start making long lead time orders of equipment that would be exempt from grocery receipts and compensating taxes. That way, the developer is able to hit the ground running once closing has occurred. The inducement resolution also serves the purpose of authorizing the county to publish and mail notices and does not obligate the county to adopt the ordinance at a later meeting. Rather, it simply serves as sort of that first step in the longer IRB process. I'm happy to answer any questions.
With that, I move we approve resolution 2024-34.
Got a motion in a second? Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Okay, that, now we are on 9D. Request for the approval of the resolution 2024-35 Participation in Transportation Project Fund Program administered by New Mexico Department of Transportation.
Good morning again. In your packet is a copy of that resolution, and this is just part of the TPF grant application. And it's just stating that we are committing to the 5% match of the $96,123.30.
We approve resolution 2024-35.
I'll second. Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Commissioner Lopez? Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request for approval of resolution 2024-36 supporting the New Mexico County's 2025 legislative priorities.
Okay, so this is, my understanding, this is something that is presented through New Mexico counties with some of the, we are already hit some of these grants. So I just recommend that you approve this resolution. It's for the HB 22 appropriations, the detention reimbursement fund, courthouse funding, detention reimbursement, retention, firefighter EMS recruitment fund, emergency medical services, and 700 megahertz radios, equitable disclosure, IPRA improvements, resources to support border-related humanitarian and crime methods. So it is my understanding this is something that they do generally yearly?
Yep. We passed it yearly. We just passed this. I have another meeting on it on Wednesday. They're all. These were all the ones that the board had approved. So anyway.
New Mexico County, yes.
Yeah.
So.
New Mexico Counties.
I move approval of 9E, resolution 24-36.
Okay. Got a motion in a second to approve 9E. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Contracts, agreements, and procurements. Request for approval of the road use and road maintenance agreement between Nextera Energy Transmission Southwest LLC and BOCC.
So this is just the agreement that they presented on?
Mm-hmm.
And if you would, please approve the agreement.
I move the approval of 10A.
Motion in a second. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Request for the approval of the Clean and Beautiful Grant Program Agreement with State and New Mexico Tourism Department for $12,025.10.
Okay, so this is before us to approve it. I'd like for y'all to consider this. The situation with this grant, when it was originally set up, it was with the idea that there would be another grant that would help fund it. It would be for the turf that was in, for the front. We did not get the additional grant funding. With the $12,000 now, we don't know if we will be able to make the adjustments that are needed. I have suggested that we just reseed, and as it is, our current caretaker is also helping to try and encourage the growth of the grass that's already up there. And he also suggested there's a couple of sprinkler heads that need to be replaced, and then the controller. All of those items would probably cost us anywhere from $1,500 to $2,000 just to try and fix what we have and not the 12. But with the $12,000, it was already for the project of the turf. As far as the county goes, we would also have to match that funding. I don't, I'm not in favor of going with turf or the fact of necessarily following through with this grant.
I move we approve 10B.
So you do want to follow through with it?
Although, no.
Yeah.
Okay, got a motion? And I'll second? Got a motion in a second? Commissioner Savage? No?
No.
Commissioner Lopez?
No.
Motion fails. Thank you. 10C, request for approval to accept grand award for transportation project fund grant for $1,826,342.72 from the New Mexico Department of Transportation.
Good morning again. This is the agreement that goes with that resolution. We have submitted two TPF grant applications this year to DOT, and we were awarded this one, the 1.821, oh my goodness, let me start over. $1,826,342.72 from DOT. And our match would be the $96,123.30. We were awarded a TPF grant a few years back, and DOT told us that they were really surprised that we received this award because they, and they really didn't know why other than that we, once we received our funding, that we went to work right away and we were able to complete the project, and we closed it out 14 months before the deadline. And they did tell us that in the future that they have made some changes and that entities probably will not receive TPF funding back-to-back. So we were very fortunate that we received this agreement again.
I'll move to approve 10D. Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Lopez?
I've got a question.
Oh, is it D or C? I'm sorry, C. C, sorry, my bad.
To an air, did they tell me what the sunset is on this one? Because we did a phenomenal job on that last one. I'm really surprised, but I know that the district and our, and our district really worked diligently.
What's the sunset on it?
But what's the sunset on it?
What's the sunset on this one?
What's the sunset on it?
And the work is to be completed by 2027, June.
27, June of 2027. Okay. How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Request for approval of the IGA contract between Roosevelt County and the AOC with the Nite District Court Improvements.
I move approval of 10D.
Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries. 10E, request for the approval of the inmate confinement between the county of Santa Fe and Roosevelt County contracts for detainee housing.
Move we approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
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 Commissioner Lopez? Okay. Motion carries. F, request for the approval of contract between Roosevelt County and Lee County for housing the adult and juvenile detainees.
Move we approve.
Second. Got a motion in a second for 10F. Savage is yes? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Request for 10G, request for the approval of the DFA appropriation 23-ZH5048-71-2 in the amount of $131,250 for over three years to hire new law enforcement support positions.
We approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve item 10G. Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Commissioner?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Is there any media? Do you have any questions? Okay. And do we need executive session? Okay. So.
Move we go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, we are going into executive session pursuant to 10-15-1 NMSA 1978 to limited personnel matters pertaining to deputy county finance manager position. Any further action? Oh, that's it. We are now in executive session. You want a break, y'all?
No.
We're good.